The Carterville City Council is now in session. That'll stand for invocation.
Bow to me as we pray. Our dear gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the beautiful weather you've given us this week. And we ask that you would go before us as we do the business of this city. And we thank you for placing us here and giving us this opportunity to live in a wonderful and beautiful community. Be with us now, be with those who are not with us tonight. Mayor and Councilman Hodge, Councilwoman Hodge, we ask a special blessing on them and return them to us safely. Help us in all we do, and it's in your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on the agenda, we have the approval of the Council Ministers.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carry. Next, we have a first reading of ordinance T-18-5.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Council. As you had noted, this is T-18-05. This is a proposed text amendment to the city's sign ordinance. With that said, this did go to the planning commission. However, technically, sign ordinance requirements do not have to go to the planning commission, but as a matter of allowing them to look at ordinances that relate to planning and development issues like the signed ordinance and development regulations, we typically will send it to them for a recommendation. The proposed signed ordinance will basically allow an existing billboard on East Main Street to be converted to a digital billboard. It is proposing to amend two sections of the signed ordinance. One, it would allow billboards on a section of Main Street where it's currently not, where they're not allowed. And two, it will allow digital billboards on that same section. The billboard in question is already existing. It was placed there prior to the most recent changes that took that section out of the ordinance. With that, the planning commission did hear this, and they did recommend approval.
Okay. This is the first reading. Are there any discussions? Is that, will take it up on me?
No, no. You're fine, go ahead.
Okay.
You're fine, thank you, sir. Keith, the other floor next.
All right. The next item on the agenda is an easement from Harbin Clinic to the city of Carterville for gas and electric facilities. It is recommended by staff for your approval.
Any discussion? Is there a motion on the floor?
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carry. Next one, Keith.
Yes. This is two resolutions. The first resolution is one that approves the election results of the May 2018 SPOLOST. The second resolution is what's referred to as a validation resolution. This particular SPOLOST gave the city the flexibility to do a bond issue, to prepay for SPOLOST projects if the city so desires. And what this validation resolution does is adopts that flexibility for y'all to potentially use in the future if y'all so desire. Both are recommended by staff for your approval.
Any discussion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carry. Mayor Spock, you have another item.
Yes, Council. The first council meeting in December conflicts with the annual Christmas parade. We have traditionally opted to move the evening meeting to a morning meeting, so I ask for your approval for that time change for our December 6th meeting.
Motion to approve, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carry. Ms. Reed.
Good evening. This request is for the creation of a festival zone for October 27th with the Mullinex Teams' Trick or Treat and Downtown Movie Night. You did have a second date on your resolution originally for November 8th, and that has been withdrawn because the insurance paperwork on that was not completed in a timely fashion. So, the October 27th date, we have all of the appropriate permits, insurance, all the requirements have been met, and staff does recommend approval.
Discussion? Another motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carry.
Thank you.
Chief Carter.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council. Come before you this evening for consideration of a particular agreement between the city of Carterville and Metro Atlanta Emergency Medical Services. In September of 1998, we entered into an intergovernmental agreement with Bartow County. At that time, we began providing medical and trauma care, working underneath the protocols for Bartow EMS and utilizing them as a training vehicle for the department. Well, with the change of October the 1st, Metro Atlanta EMS began operating here in Bartow County as the emergency medical service provider. Bartow EMS is no longer functioning. We feel that as a department, we should enter into a written agreement with Metro Atlanta EMS to clarify certain mutual services between the two departments, such as training, expectations, and field support. Highlights of the agreement that's been presented before you this evening, you will see will be a mutual training program, disposable equipment replacement. There's also field support for our live-fire training exercises, their participation in drills with us, and standby activities in support for the health and safety for the firefighters of Carterville. And Mr. Pete Kianis, the president and CEO of Atlanta Metro, is here this evening. He can answer any questions that you may have. Respectfully requesting approval of this agreement. It has already been reviewed and approved by city legal staff and authorization for the mayor to execute the agreement at the appropriate time. I stand ready for any questions you may have.
Discussion, questions?
My questions were answered earlier. Thank you.
Is there a motion on the floor?
I'm making a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carry. Thank you, Mr. Carter.
Thank you.
Mr. Jones?
Good evening, everyone. I think first up is our Corps of Engineers' storage payment. This is a payment we have been making literally for decades. The payment typically falls within a range of about $185,000 to $225,000. This year was a bit of a surprise. The dam, as you know, had a fire several years ago, and the Corps has elected to load the entire cost of those repairs into their calculations for this year's storage contract. The contract that we have with the Corps is actually two contracts, both of which provide that we pay a portion of O&M costs for the dam, and these repair costs fall into that category. So, the total billing this year for storage contracts came to $327,123.25. Now, we budgeted $250,000 based on the previous five years' history, so this is in excess of what we budgeted. It is essentially a payment that we are required to make to be able to continue using water from the dam, and would recommend your approval for that. I did write up in your package that we have identified a couple of different ways for funding the overage. We will make a few cuts, trims, here and there to cover that, and if that is not sufficient to cover it, then we would use reserves to make up that difference.
Discussion? Not, is there a motion on the floor?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carry. Next, Bob.
Yes, sir. Next up is our bypass elimination. The wastewater plant, when constructed, was built with a structure that would allow you to essentially bypass the entire sewage flow into the Etowah River. This was actually done then. It is not done now, and we would like to get rid of that for a couple of reasons. One, obviously, we just don't want even the chance that something like this would happen. Two, we need to do this work in order to facilitate bypass pumping in our plant upgrade project that's coming up soon, so we're kind of working ahead of ourselves and preparing for that work. The work will require essentially two elements. One is to construct a concrete wall to eliminate the route of bypass to the river, and the second is we will actually have to, ourselves, bypass the flow around this work area into the plant in order to create a dry environment to do the construction in. So, we took bids for the wall construction. The low bid for that work came from Willow Construction, $14,800. And the bypass pumping, Godwin pumps, I'm going to ask for a not-to-exceed price of $35,000. As we discussed in the work session, I don't believe we will need anything close to that, but that would just allow us the flexibility, if we get into something that we can't foresee, to keep those pumps working, because bypass pumping is something you can't just stop in the middle of and figure things out. You're either doing it, or you're not doing it. So, thus the reason for the request on the not-to-exceed.
Discussion? Is there a motion on the floor?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carry. Next one, Bob.
Yes, sir. Last up, the wastewater plant, we need to install a security camera system there. We've had, as we discussed earlier, we've had a couple of instances of unauthorized tours of the plant. Some of our night operators have been walking through the plant and noticed people in the plant wandering around. This is highly discouraged for a number of reasons. You know, we obviously are concerned about our employees' safety. When you're walking around the plant at night, you don't want to be surprised by somebody out there, but, you know, for the public, the concern is, there are a lot of large, open basins out there, and it's dark, and it would be very easy, if you don't know where you're going or what's in front of you, to trip and fall, or to trip and fall in, and there really is not much getting out if that happens. This is the first of what I imagine will be a series of things coming to you, but initially, we'd like to put in a camera system to just keep a better eye on things. We asked for quotes from our IT department, and they came back with a recommendation in your package that's called the 4K Quote. It's a little higher-resolution camera. The total price on that's $15,960, and would recommend that for your approval.
Discussion?
I just want to, I know you discussed the fence because of the floodplain and stuff like that. Can you just review that? I know we have some open...
Yes, we are, and one of the reasons why we wouldn't immediately look harder at putting a fence up is we would probably destroy it in the plant project that's coming up, so to put one up now would sort of not work.
I mean, I think we have a front fence on.
Right.
While the road and gates and stuff, so it's...
Yeah, and all of the gates, all the entrances, they are closed at 5:00. So, you know, we do what we can, but it's the, you can get access to the plant in other ways.
I'm making a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carry.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Mr. Sanders.
Thank you, Mr. Cooley, Council. This item is a bid award for a garbage truck. We opened bids on October 5th. We had 14 bids, and the best bid is for $148,151 from Carolina Environmental for a high LPT-1000 body on a Kenworth T-370 chassis. It's a budgeted item, and it will be a GMA lease pool purchase, and we recommend approval.
Discussion? Got a good a motion?
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carry.
Thank you.
Mr. Ford, you have the next three.
Yes, Mayor Pro Tem. The first item is HVAC purchased several weeks ago. We had an issue with our fire department HVAC, and we had to make emergency repair or replacement. The freon was leaking. It's the older type freon, and needed a new compressor. It was more cost-effective to put a new one in. The total cost was $7,478.91, and I recommend that for approval.
Discussion? Motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carry. Next one?
The next item is Matthew's Garage Repair Invoice. We had a city vehicle involved in an accident. The other insurance company paid 100% of this cost. Total cost to repair was $6,793.29, and I recommend approval, the payment of this invoice.
Discussion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carry.
Last time I have, Mayor Pro Tem, is the 2014 SPOLOST projects. The Fire Department Station 3 is a primary project that's been approved by the city council on that. We anticipated a $2.6 million estimated cost to build that facility. That was based on the Fire Station 4 cost from several years ago and some changes that were being made to reduce the overall cost. The contractor that had been approved for this project, A-Buck Incorporated, gave us a guaranteed maximum price of a little over $3.5 million, so exceeded our budget, and that's brought for you this evening, our discussion of what to do with this project. As mentioned in the work session, there's a couple options that are on the table, the possibility of we move forward. We do have some additional funds that are being projected in the SPOLOST, but it'll still, this project with the associated costs will exceed the overall budget, so I'm looking for council direction on how you want us to proceed with this project.
You've heard the proposal, and there's been much discussion.
I would like to throw out the idea that we do two RF, well, three RFPs. Construction manager risk RFP, a general contractor RFP, and then carve out the site work as another RFP. That's what we kind of discussed in the work session, so I don't know if anybody has a better idea, more clarifying idea.
My only question is, okay, so, and obviously, I apologize I wasn't here for the work session, but, so, you're saying that there's a lot of site work that maybe we can pull out and do ourselves, or are we bidding that?
Bidding that. My recommendation would be we bid it, but we also know that for the property that the city council approved a few months ago for the water department, that we have excess dirt that we can just haul from basically there, so really, you only have the cost of loading that onto the trucks and moving it to the fire station site versus buying it. And this current contractor has us buying that 10,000 cubic yards of dirt is what the fill is basically you need to bring. So, we're looking at a potential of saving that by using our own dirt that we've already owned, and just a matter of hauling that. And then, if we carve that piece out, there's potential that we can not have the markup, that we know that we can get that bid from a potentially a local contractor, or a contractor says, here's the work for the site. That is the biggest piece of that total GMP from the contractor presently. It was about $563,000, I believe, was the site work piece out of their $3.5 million number estimate, so about 19% of the overall budget.
And you and the chief, and who else was on this committee that met and bid this out originally that we, I mean, I guess it was back...
So, it's about four or five months ago, because we had them on...
We awarded A-Buck. I mean, you guys basically brought it to us, saying that, hey, not only are they the most qualified, but were they the most competitive as far as their pricing?
They were the most competitive. They had the most experience for the site steward attendant that was going to be there based on the other companies, and then there's only, I think, four total bids that we had received, three or four. Actually, I think one of them was late. They may only have had three, I'll have to go back and look, but, so we interviewed a couple of different firms, but myself, Chief Carter, Wade Wilson, city engineer, and I think we had anybody else on the committee, but we did evaluate them, and this, based on the companies that bid, this was the one that we recommended.
I mean, obviously, nobody knows what these prices are going to come back at, so my question is, looking at the list, and I, I don't know if y'all already went over this or not, but, so, a lot of these things are public works, and then we got a little bit of water and sewer in there. Are these projects going to happen that are on this list?
I'm sorry, the current ones, we have spent a little bit of money on GIS. We have not spent the full $425,000. I believe it's probably in the neighborhood of about $50,000 or $60,000 for some servers. Cook Street Culvert and the Cook Street Manhole Replacement, the very last one, the water and sewer, they're working conjunction with that. Bob Jones brought in a few weeks ago, CSX contract, because we have to bore under the railroad for that. Those two projects are ongoing. Tommy was able to save a lot of money on the Sugar Valley Road of Nancy Creek Bridge that came in, what, $35,000 approximately, instead of $180,000, so there's a $45,000 savings right there, but then the road project is kind of, gone down.
Because, I mean, I'm just sitting here going, you know, I agree, you know, there's no harm in going back, but I'm terrified you're going to end up with the exact same thing, and, you know, I don't understand how A-Buck's going to take this. Would they come back and rebid it? I mean, are they, are they going to be upset with us? Was at any point talking with them, the 2.5 million ever mentioned?
We did let them know, but that was a number that we had talked with our architect, and based on the information we had at the time, but the numbers have gone up on several projects. I've talked to several department heads, and just did the airport project. We were shocked that the number came in almost double the way we anticipated for the water line at the airport, this just happened.
I mean, I agree. I don't think there's anything wrong in starting over if we've got to. I just, I mean, we're roughly, I mean, how much money have we already spent on it? I mean, I see that you got your engineer, and have they already been fully paid, or is that just, that's an invoice coming?
The architect, we've paid probably about 70%, because most of their work is complete. It's not 100%. The furnishings, obviously, you're after the fact. When the building's done, Geo Hydro has done some of the work, but that won't really start until the construction's manning. They had to do some borings out there, so we paid them a little bit of money, but the bulk of the expense is obviously going to be the construction phase. What you do have, I'm sorry, what you do have is a pre-construction fee to A-Buck is what has been agreed to. They were paid, will be paid. They have not built us yet, but they will.
We use Croft, is that right?
Croft, correct.
What is their opinion?
I've not got into big detail. I mean, they, we looked at the numbers, the GMP numbers, they were kind of surprised at how A-Buck evaluated that, but again, I didn't go into great detail of discussion with them. That was more internal for us to look at.
I guess I've had my discussion there. I mean, I agree. I mean, if a million dollars is a lot, but I just got a sneaky suspicion we're going to be sitting here figuring out a million dollars here. How quickly can we move on this?
Quite honestly, if we go back and rebid, you got 30 days to bid it. You got to advertise, you got to evaluate, you bring it to the city council. Honestly, and with the winter coming in, we're probably not looking until spring, breaking ground. That's, again, if we, the other piece of it is we throw out the site work and start, we could do that sooner, because, you know, again, it'd be a 30-day bid process for that. Evaluate those bids, bring it to the city council. You're still looking at probably, you know, latter part of the first, probably first meeting in December realistically, to bring that in, and when they can get that work started, but we'll just have to look at that, if we bid all three of those and see what that number comes in at.
And what's the cutoff to get it into the SPOLOST?
There's no cutoff. It's, the money sits there on SPOLOST until we could, we have $2,007,000 still sitting there that haven't been spent 100%. We do have, I'm sorry, we do have another 16 months of collection coming in, and that's a projection, is that extra $992,000 is based on what I do is take current dollars we've collected through August of 2018, and I take an average of every month's collection, and then take that for the rest of the months, you know, the other 16 months now. Sorry, I've come up with a total of, you know, $5 million that we collect.
So, the cost to rebid it would be the $18,000 if we backed out of A-Buck?
That's what we would owe them.
Probably maybe a little more. There are probably some incidentals that aren't included in that. They would be entitled for reimbursement, so, you know, I'd say on the safe side, I'd say probably not to exceed $30,000, but...
And there's nothing inside of our contract with them or anything we've signed that doesn't say at any point, we can just say for no other price we can use water?
Well, there are things in our contracts. The stage we are at in our contract with them right now is, we hired them to be our construction manager. They were to evaluate the potential cost of construction, come back to us with the cost of construction, and then the city would approve that cost of construction, and the project would start. They've given us the cost of construction, which is over our budget, so the city has not approved that starting of construction. And under the contract, until we actually approve that cost of construction, we have a window where if we give them notice, then from that date of notice, then seven days later, the contract terminates, they submit us their final bill, which will be that $18.5 plus whatever their incidentals are, and the city is responsible to pay that bill under the contract.
All right, so, you, they delivered this to you and/or the chief or whoever.
Correct.
And we all sat down and said, wow, and you said, how can we get this down, and they just looked at you?
I knew based on the number that it came in higher than what we had budgeted, and before I even got them to do additional work for value engineering, come back with that, I just said, hold on, let me have a discussion with the city council, and then we'll make a determination, because I didn't want them to spend additional hours, and then we have to pay them additional money if we're going down a different path. So, right now, they're on hold at this point in time.
And there's no motions or anything we're making here? This is just a, or what Gary was recommending, we would actually make a motion and approve this to be done?
What you would do is to make a motion to not accept the GMP and to give the seven-day notice to A-Buck. That would be motion number one, and then you don't have to do it at tonight's meeting. You can do it whenever you want to. Motion number two, or direction to staff, would be rebid the project under the guidelines Gary suggested, or whatever guidelines y'all want to.
And that has to be a motion, that's not just a direction?
Correct. That would be a motion.
So, direction could be, you know, bringing A-Buck back in, letting them understand what we're about to do, and...
Have them reevaluate.
And communicate with them our site work that we, the idea we have about site work, because I just don't want to run off somebody that we had these bids, and you guys trusted these guys, you think, I mean, it is a fire station, and we want it done right, and I don't want to just go out there and get the cheapest, lowest, I mean, obviously, and we want to use local people as much as we can, and the position that we've got in is we can use local, and we've already went through the process. You know, if I was on the other side and I was A-Buck, I would ask for, if all of a sudden we made a motion tonight to just rebid everything, I'd sort of be at a loss. I mean, I imagine your phone would ring tomorrow and want to know what's going on, so, me personally, I'd like to hear what they have to say, you know, about, hey, this is what council's thinking here, we're looking at site work, if we can pull that out, and see what you can work out, because, I mean, I think, doing some simple math, I mean, I, you know, with the money that we might be saving thanks to Tommy and these other projects moving on, we're not going to be, and obviously, this estimated increase in SPOLOST, we can't bank on that, but we're not going to be that far off. I don't want to put you on the spot and go, you think they're going to come back at 2.5 now?
Oh, no, it won't come down that low. I mean, I was surprised it was over $3 million, honestly, but again, it's, the numbers have kept going up in construction costs, so...
How much, how much was the actual cost of the dirt, Dan? You may have said, I just don't remember.
I think it goes around $165,000, I believe, but honestly, I don't remember that specific number. I just know that overall was like $565,000 or thereabouts for the site work piece.
Yeah, I mean, you know, if y'all want to, you could very easily direct Dan to meet, and the chief to meet with A-Buck and see what lower number they could come back for y'all at the next council meeting, and then make your decision based on that, but be advised by doing that, what Dan informed you is, their costs go up, so instead of paying your $18.5 plus incidental, it may then be $25,000 or $26,000 plus incidental, or whatever it is. So, you know, there is a cost to doing that, but, I mean, $6,000 in a $3 million project's not a lot, so...
But he's helped, he's, you've asked him to kind of stay... But he's helped, he's, you've asked him to kind of stand down.
I didn't want, I was wanting to get direction, because I knew it was over budget, and I didn't want to spend more of their dollars or our dollars basically without having some direction on where we want to go.
Does, chief, do you have anything you want to add? Do you have anything to?
Well, I think, as we talked about in the work session, we've got to do what's most prudent. I just remind the council, as far as the project is concerned, that currently this fire station is a used tire store that we moved in 1995, 1996. And that particular building, I cannot rehab it up to the standards that we need as far as the health and safety and operation of firefighters. So that's already been through the 2007 SLOSS, it was unfunded, we had to move it, we had to move it into this SLOSS. So I would just say, whatever you feel is the most prudent course, I agree with, we'll go with that. But please, you know, let's, let's keep the project to the front side, is what I would ask.
But chief, you sat in the meetings.
Yes.
Do you think A-Buck's the person for the job, or do you think there's somebody else there, out there that can, can do the job that A-Buck says for less?
Based upon our RFP, the people that had applied, going through the criteria that reviewed, A-Buck was the one, the best one for us to bring to you on this. Now, was this number higher than we anticipated? Sure, but construction cost has gone completely through the roof. We knew what we spent on the fire station on MLK in 2011. We took that, we knew that construction dollars was going to be up, so we went ahead with Croft and put in some value engineering. We dropped the profiles of the building, we changed the roof design, we removed decorative arches on the backside, several things to try to bring that cost down. Well, this cost, of course, has came in higher than what we anticipated. Is it a legitimate cost? I can't answer that. You know, I don't know. What's going to happen when we rebid it? I don't, I don't know. I think there's some ways, as Mr. Porter has suggested, as far as to bring down the actual site cost. There's a little bit, maybe a discussion about the actual total number of cubic yards, they're saying ten thousand, our numbers are about fifty-six hundred. So there's some work there, you know, to be done.
And if I understand their price is not to exceed, so, obviously, we understand that they expect it to come in somewhat a little bit below that, but, I mean, I guess I keep coming back to, I think you both have said, yes, A-Buck was the one that you guys chose, and we all voted to approve them. Is there any big difference between the eighteenth of October, and I think our meeting is November the first, isn't it? Is there a huge difference between those thirteen, fourteen days? I mean, me personally, if I was.
My personal opinion is no.
Okay.
I just, there again, I would just ask the council to take whatever's the most prudent course to make sure that, you know, we're ethical about whatever decision we make, and we do the right thing.
I would, my direction, no motions, would be, you guys bring them to the fire and let them know what we're doing, what we've all talked about tonight, which obviously is a public meeting, and report back on the first. And if that's the case, and they're, you know, we feel, if we feel, I think I might feel more confident going with them at that point, or starting over. And if thirteen or fourteen days don't mean that much, then I think we owe it to them. That's me.
Do you feel they've brought their best number right now?
Quite honestly, no, because they actually haven't gone back. Typically, what my experience with the CME at risk is, they've already done some due diligence and gone out to some subs, and got some good numbers. We haven't seen those numbers or anything. They kind of use some of their experience, because they're a GC as well. They have done some different things. They haven't really gone and chopped the market on everything like they could have. So the number realistically should be down, should be less, because that's, that's my opinion. But again, this is kind of where we're at today's, you know, for tonight, is where, how do we want to proceed forward.
So, I'm gathering that we should put this off.
That's my opinion. I mean, I don't disagree with, if we go, if they can't, I, I just know.
Let's just, do you want to just table it to the next meeting?
Yeah, I mean, we spent, we're going to spend eighteen plus thousand dollars on them.
Y'all won't need to table it or take any official action.
You just let it go.
You know.
This is just a discussion.
Yeah, correct. And if two of y'all aren't ready to vote to move on, it takes four of y'all to do a motion, so then we know it's going to be on the next meeting's agenda.
Right.
So I think that's sort of.
But the direction, though, you want to give, the direction you want to give is, talk, talk to A-Buck.
Talk, talk to A-Buck, absorb that additional expense, whatever it may be.
You've got some good ideas, and I think that needs to hear them.
To see if you can get a lower cost and bring back to us on, is it November first?
Yes.
November first for the next meeting, and if the council likes that number, they may go ahead, and if they don't, then we may start the process over.
Just, that's fine, I'll take that direction. And one other thing, just a minor one, obviously, as Chief Carter mentioned, I brought up in the work session about the pine trees. Is the council okay? Do I need them to officially approve that we can go out, get bids for selling of the pine trees?
You can go get the bids and then submit those to council for approval.
Okay. I mean, that's just a few dollars, we'll be able to, a free coup. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Reinhardt. First reading, I've been.
Honorable Mayor Pro Tem and Council, this is the first reading of an ordinance amendment. This has to do with the fiscal year 2018 fiscal year budget. During the closed process, certain entries are made that need to be adjusted by amending the budgets for the general fund, special revenue funds, and the SLOSS funds. This will bring us back into compliance with the generally accepted accounting principles standards. These adjustments reflect the necessary changes needed to bring the budgets back into balance where revenues and expenses mirror the actual year-to-date numbers. And again, this is the first reading of this ordinance.
Any discussions?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
There is no.
There's no motions.
Oh, then I don't second his non-motion.
Yeah. Sorry.
First read?
First reading, yes.
First read.
Hey, you can make a motion on the first reading if you want, but you don't have.
I'm making a delayed motion for the.
We'll be right along.
Yeah.
Mr. Reinhardt, we have the monthly financial report.
I'm jumping out.
Yes, Honorable Mayor Pro Tem and Council, before I get started, I gave you an updated cash position sheet. It was eliminated out of your packet by myself in error. I apologize for that. We'll get into the financial statement tonight. We'll be looking at the August 2017 and comparing to August 2018. And the general fund revenues increased over last August by about a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. Expenses decreased by seven hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars. This is due to the fire truck being purchased at this point in time last year in July. Two areas of revenue I look at, local option sales tax, we have an increase there of about ninety-nine thousand dollars, and billing permits and inspection fees have an increase there of about thirty-five thousand dollars. In the water and sewer fund, revenues increased over last year by four hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. Expenses increased by two hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. This is due to increased operating expenses, increased capital expenses, and this is also coupled with decreased personnel expenses and decreased debt service expenses. In the gas fund, revenues increased over last August by three hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. Expenses increased by a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. This is due to decreased personnel expenses, decreased operating expenses, decreased cost of purchase gas, and increased capital expenses. In the electric fund, revenues increased over last year by two hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. Expenses decreased by a hundred and four thousand dollars. This is due mainly to decreased personnel costs, decreased operating expenses, decreased cost of purchase electricity, and this is coupled with increased capital expenditures. Stormwater fund, revenues decreased from last year by about nine thousand dollars. Expenses increased by forty-eight thousand dollars. This is due mainly to decreased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, and increased capital expenses. In the solid waste fund, revenues increased over last August by twelve thousand dollars, and expenses increased by forty-nine thousand dollars. This is due to increased personnel expenses, decreased operating expenses, and increased capital expenses. And finally, in the fiber optic fund, revenues increased over last August by fifteen thousand dollars. Expenses increased by six thousand dollars. This is due to increased operating expenses and increased capital expenses. That is my report for the evening.
Thank you. Any discussion? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That concludes the agenda for the night.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Well, Greg might have something to say. Greg, you got anything to bring to us?
We have a visitor here.
One American.
Okay, welcome. Hope you enjoyed the activity of the council. But if there's no more discussion, there's a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.